I'd like to get started and I'd like to begin by saying I'm Bill Volk, I'm the chairman of the planning board. And I'd like to welcome all of you to this meeting, this forum tonight with our consultants Jeff Lacy and Randall Aaron. I'd like to particularly thank Mike Canales, the administrator of the town who unfortunately is unable to join us tonight. For his help in organizing this meeting and I'd like to thank you all for zooming in tonight. I hope you'll find it a learning experience and an opportunity to raise issues, ask questions and the like. As we walk through this important draft bylaw. So I'd just like to mention at the outset that, you know, this way of meeting via Zoom is awkward. And sometimes difficult for for us in terms of holding meetings and communicating with our residents. We're going to try to follow the recommendations of the executive office of the governor. Coming out of the COVID-19 situation, we're going to make our best efforts to make sure the public can attend these meetings via Zoom. And we want to make sure that everyone's treated fairly. I want to remind people that attendees will will note that all video and audio meetings will be recorded, are being, this one included. Being recorded and is available on ctsbtv.org, ctsbtv.org. As has been the custom for all public meetings of the town now for more than a year. When joining this meeting, all the microphones are going to be on mute and except for speakers, they should remain on mute. You should please use the chat function, which is at the bottom of your screen to ask questions. And to communicate any concerns with the delivery, we will do our best to answer every question that's asked. We may have to combine similar questions in a few cases in the interest of time. And if we do run out of time, I hope we will try to answer any remaining questions. And if you have follow up questions, you can email Jennifer Carmichael at jcarmichael@stockbridge-ma.gov. Or planningboard@stockbridge-ma.gov and we'll submit those to our consultants and share the responses with you. So that's the the rules of the road for tonight. I hope you'll do your best to observe them. And I'd like to now introduce the other members of the planning board. Our Marie Raftery, Wayne Slasic, Nancy Socia, Kate Fletcher, Gary Pitney. And the vice chair Christine Rasmussen, and I'll turn this over to Christine at this point, please.
Thank you, Bill. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, the zoning bylaw that you're going to hear about this evening is a hybrid of open space residential design. A term you're probably more familiar with. But the other equally important part of this bylaw is natural resource historic preservation. And the bylaw, because it is a hybrid, has been uniquely designed for Stockbridge. It's came about because of the recommendation from Joel Russell's diagnostic report. And as you look at this bylaw, you will see some of the provisions he recommended in this draft. OSRD and NRPC are not like older cluster bylaws. The primary difference is that OSRD, and I'm not going to keep using all the initials. Sets aside open space based on the resource values, not by a formula. And you and under this bylaw, a four step planning process is used. Which is not the same as what we typically find in the subdivision process. So this is a new way of thinking about land use that has been used successfully across the Commonwealth and across the nation. And as you will hear later, the first step is the open spaces designated. Then the house sites are determined where they could be. Then they look at how roads and utilities can be installed. And then it's the last step, the lot lines are drawn. So it is sort of turning the conventional development process we're aware of on its head. But this is why so many organizations like the Mass Green Communities Council, Mass Audubon. And even home builders like these bylaws because they do maintain local character. They protect the unique and fragile habitats. They reduce the pollution impacts on storm water runoff. They promote aquifer discharges and recharges. They provide opportunities to link wildlife habitats throughout the area, not just in one small area. They have conservation values that are included in the planning process. They reduce isolation and sprawl. They provide neighborhood trails for interconnected network of open space. They can be combined with local initiative programs to achieve construction of workforce or affordable housing. They bring everyone to the table in the review process. So it incorporates town values into a streamlined process. They provide flexibility to encourage developers to create neighborhoods. They decrease the environmental impacts and site development costs by designing with the terrain. And saving the most cherished features of the property. Tonight's presentation is only going to focus on the components of the lots. I know some people want us to move forward with a replacement for the cottage era estate bylaw. We are working towards that goal, but as we started to delve into it, we found that it gets to be so complicated. When you put everything together in one bylaw. So tonight we are only addressing open space and use. We are very fortunate that we have two wonderful speakers. Jeff Lacy is a retired planner from the Massachusetts Department of Conservation. And in the Division of Water Supply Protection. He's a principal at the Rural Planning Associates. Where he is known for his work on natural resource preservation zoning. And in his free time, he's a farmer and runs his trucking business as well as being a 25 member. Person on the board of the planning board in his hometown. And Randall Aaron is an internationally recognized landscape planner. Who developed the concept of open space design while working with landscape architect Harry Dodson at UMass. He's the author of over 20 books, including Rural by Design, a reference manual the planning board donated to the Stockbridge Library. He is the country's most sought after speaker on the topic of creative development design. Known as twice green because it succeeds both in the environmental and economically important density neutral manner. Respecting landowners equity allows developers to build at legal density. But most importantly to me, it requires their significant conservation through more compact layouts. Together with the planning board members you met, we are presenting the first public draft of this totally unique bylaw. To address the issue of sustainability with a focus on the characteristics that makes Stockbridge memorable. So with that, I'm not for sure if Randall is on, but we will certainly, if he is, I will introduce Randall and Jeff. And thank you both for all the efforts you've put into your development of these bylaws. So I, Randall, I believe is going to start the presentation, correct Randall?
That's right, that's right. So I need to go to a screen share and I think I do escape or here share a screen. And here we go. View slide sorter slideshow from beginning. Okay, I'm going to be speaking briefly, doing a very quick recap of some of the key points. In the presentation that I did last fall. And it illustrates the design process as well as two or three examples. Based on a number of books that I've written over the years. You know, I like to begin by just showing a few pictures of what a traditional New England town and village. Design characteristics look like and they're compact. And homes are closer together, but they don't spread out. And as a result in this picture from a village in Maine, you can see old orchards, new orchards, fields, pastures, meadows and woodlands. Which you would not see if the homes were all spread out on two acre lots or four acre lots. And when you get it on the ground, a village like that looks like this, it's a little bit informally arranged, typically not too geometrically. Goes with the flow of the land. Many villages have central greens or central open spaces that that give them a lot of distinctiveness. And new conservation subdivisions can have the same. However, standard large lot zoning produces the opposite result. And is actually contrary to most policies in the comprehensive plan. Now, these are large lots, they happen to be in Wyoming, but that's why you don't see more trees. But what you see is basically all the land is consumed by house lots or streets. Four acre zoning, part of Stockbridge's current regulations. Spread the houses out, don't have any open space except what's within any individual house lot. Or four acre zoning can be implemented in a way with with open space where you can save 70 to 75% of the land. By creating 10 one acre lots instead of 10 four acre lots on a 40 acre parcel. So this is large lot zoning. And it's really the opposite of what New England is all about. The density control in large lot zoning would be carried over into the new bylaw. At the same density as the existing bylaw. So even though the lots are smaller, the overall density should be very close to the same as it is today. At the heart of conservation design is a set of rural sighting principles and a force of design process. Which enable the site designer and the planning board to work together to choose which site features to protect. And which site features to build on. If you want to save farmland, you basically try to put the homes more in the woods. And if you want to preserve the woodland and the habitat and buffer the water quality, the homes get pulled out of the woodland. And put on a part of the farmland. In both cases, the road, which is at the top of the picture. Gives you a view of open space. So if you're at the top of the picture of that road looking south, you'll see open space in both of these designs. A book that I collaborated on about 30 years ago. In the Connecticut River Valley shows a site like some of the land you'd see in Stockbridge before development, one farmhouse. And woodland acreage and open field acreage. And the large lot zoning approach, this might be two acre lots, gets spread out everywhere. But if they were on smaller lots like one acre lots in the two acre zone, you could reserve half of the open space, just like this. So the choices Plan A with the large land consumptive lots versus Plan B. With the smaller lots, which are more like a village or hamlet surrounded by the open space. On the left, you see a conventional large lot development. On the right, you see how the same number of homes can be grouped. In this case, to preserve the meadows and the woodlands. The woodlands along the stream corridor, the woodlands on the steep slopes in the upper left hand corner. And of course, the fields in the foreground. So the homes are sited on the less steep wooded areas away from the brook. Conservation subdivision are designed up in Mendon Township up near Rochester about 10 years ago. And the road enters from the left. And what you see on the existing road is about five acres of open space preserved to conserve the rural character. Of the community. And then you come into the development and there is a traffic calming village green in the middle. Where you either have to come to a full stop entering the development. Or come to a full stop exiting the development. So traffic calming is an important feature of good design. Four step design process begins with a piece of ground, half goods, half meadow in this development picture. The normal development plan, the conventional development plan would look like this. But if we dial back and look at the land before that conventional development gets laid out. We can see areas that are worthwhile designing around. These are primary conservation areas, shallow soils, wetlands, flood plains. Basically, you want to stay out of them. And that's the type of ground we're talking about in a primary conservation area. A secondary conservation area is by definition buildable land. So it's about maybe half of the buildable land, maybe two thirds of the buildable land is preserved. And the homes get put on the other part of the buildable land. So in this picture, the view shed along the public road is being preserved, a large. You know, orchard and historic site of farmhouses and barns would be preserved. And there's a choice of what to build on here. Do you build in the woods or you build in the farmland? And really walking the site tells you a lot about where the, you know, the most special value adding parts of the property are. That are the most valued to the developer, the most valued to the residents. If kept alone and built the houses elsewhere. So after a site walk, planning board and developer and the site designer basically sit down and talk about where the homes ought to be. Where the conservation areas ought to be. And that is basically step one of locating the conservation areas and locating the development areas. Step two is to locate the houses in the development areas. Step three is to connect the homes with streets and trails. And step four is to draw in the lot lines. So Plan A, which is the conventional large lot development versus Plan B. You can see that we have the same number of homes, but we have a very different layout. One which has more conservation areas and generally more livability with a lot of trails. And a lot more rural character along the along the existing road. So an aerial view of conventional and aerial view of a conservation design. That's blended in with a natural features, conservation ordinance. Close up of the conventional and a close up of the more progressive. Here's a piece of property in the coast of Maine and the conventional subdivision looks like this. But the primary conservation areas are all colored in red, they're the the wetter areas. And the secondary conservation areas are the most of the farm fields. Where you put the homes would be in the southern part of the property. So that the the street system can be the shortest possible, the least expensive for the developer. The least expensive for the town to snow and repave every, you know, periodically. Feels that Cold Harbor is a good example of four acre zoning density with about 70, 75% open spaces. Development I designed down in Hanover County, Virginia about 10 or 12 years ago. And again, the the roads are kept closer in the southern end. So they don't wander through the property, fragmenting the habitat and extending their length and their cost. So this is what this subdivision looks like on the ground. The preserve farmland and the homes at the edge, the woodlands being totally preserved. There even some civil war earthworks preserved here. Now at a two acre density, this is a result that you could get. Instead of having all the lots being two acres. Many of the lots are half acre on the right hand side. And then a number of units are in very high end condominium units down by the ponds with water views. So even though the condominiums are attached, they carry the same value in the real estate market as the single family homes. On the larger lots because they're so well done. This is the view from the public road, it's a state highway, not a large one, but a rural state highway. So the rural character is definitely preserved. And these are the condo units that are situated around the ponds. Some of the single family homes back up to an orchard, which is just beautiful in the springtime. And of course, that whole orchard would have been bulldozed and removed by a conventional large lot development. My last example is one that you can visit easily from Stockbridge. Westford, Massachusetts has quite a number of subdivisions with open space. This one in particular is my favorite. It was designed by the developer after he came to a presentation I gave in the town about 20 years ago. And he decided not to pursue his conventional plan, but to do this instead. And he loved the idea of having a village green, but also keeping open space along along the road. To buffer the development from the road and the road from development. The the homes are, you know, a pretty average size for Westford. Here's your two acre green in the middle, the road encircles it. All the woods behind the homes are part of the conservation area in addition to the two acre green in the middle. So this is one of my favorite subdivisions and I would suggest that people in Stockbridge could. Learn a lot about what these subdivisions look like on the ground. If they were to take a day and drive out to Westford and look at Jarvis Farm and a number of other conservation subdivisions in that in that community. So these are just more pictures of the conservation areas. And this is what the developer was going to do until he saw the, you know, a different way of doing it. So I wanted to just show you what these these look like. And I think I can stop the screen sharing now and return so that Jeff can explain the details of the bylaw. That will get you results that that look like this.
Um, thank you, Randall, and that's a great start. There are a couple of questions that have already come in and I think maybe now is a time to address one or two of them. Before Jeff goes into his presentation, although I think it's probably best. For this to be, this first question to be addressed by Jeff, which is. The question is Stockbridge is known as a town which has always honored honored its past, its resources and its heritage. We are admired and envied. Can Jeff tell us why all of a sudden we need this extreme change in our zoning bylaws? How specifically will it keep Stockbridge, Stockbridge? Jeff, you want to respond to that or?
Sure, it's not an extremes change. You already have an existing cluster bylaw in your town that that is available to developers. So there's conventional and then you have a cluster bylaw that people can opt into if they wish. I don't understand that it's been used very much. There are some problems with it, but the the cluster bylaw. Could yield similar results to what to what Randall showed versus conventional subdivision. So really what we're talking about here is providing alternatives. Or even in the case of the bylaw that we're presenting tonight. Requiring a different pattern of development and a pattern that is more in keeping with the rural character of Stockbridge. Where in many instances, development is 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 close together, it's fairly compact. And it's surrounded by open space. That's kind of the hallmark of the New England town. And that's that's really what these bylaws seek to seek to accomplish. So I don't see them as contradictory at all to the character of Stockbridge. I believe that they're complementary to that character.
Jeff, another question or Randall, I defer to either one of you. The question is the illustrations that Randall just showed, excuse me, reflect a large community development. I'm not sure they do, but that's the question. How do the open land ideas apply in a situation like Stockbridge? Where there are a number of large lots, many of which are not contiguous.
Are you saying that there are large rural properties that are not contiguous? And how would conservation designer, natural features zoning work in that context?
I think that's the question.
Well, you don't need contiguous parcels in order to do a progressive development with permanently preserved open space. You can do it as as infill between other parcels, whether they're developed or not. The the fact that Stockbridge has quite a bit of, you know, undeveloped land makes it a great candidate for. A conservation based development approach. The alternative is a development based development approach. And does the town want a development based development approach or a conservation based development approach? They're fair to the landowners, fair to the developers. So I would think that if your comprehensive plan talks about preserving farmland, rural character. Woodland habitat, forest resources, rural character, all of the above. Can be better preserved by a development that doesn't spread out and convert everything, absolutely everything into either a house lot or a street. That's not the way that New England towns developed historically. If you want to see what that looks like. If you want to see what that looks like historically. I mean, New England is full of great villages with compact development. But if we go down to Connecticut or New Jersey, we see wall to wall development. And there is no open space left after dividing, say, a forty acre parcel into fifteen or twenty two acre lots or, you know, ten four acre lots. So I, I, I do think that when you have a parcel of forty acres or twenty acres or sixty acres, you can do some great design in this, with this technique.
A quick quick question that I think is pretty straightforward. Would all homes be single family or could multifamily or condo style homes be possible under this bylaw? I think the answer is yes. And, and you showed an example, Randall, of a, of a, a place where there are you know, in effect apartment units in a condominium situation along with regular single family homes.
That's right. The, the, the town can allow two family homes, three family homes, four family homes. It might want to limit the number of dwelling units in a given building so they don't become too massive. But a well-designed multi-unit building can actually look like a large single family home. I've seen that done many times. So with good architecture, you can make a two family, three family house look like a large single family. Not, you don't have three front doors all facing the street.
Right.
The, the, the bylaw before us tonight states that whatever types of, of homes are allowed in the district currently can be incorporated into an NHRPZ, which is the bylaw we're talking about. That's single family by right and two family by special permit. So it, it, it doesn't change that regime right away. The town, if it wishes to have even more housing types, could amend its zoning and simply allow those types in the R four and R two. And then they would be incorporated by reference into, into any subdivision.
Good, Jeff. Thank you. And Randall, thanks. There's another question about the two, R two and R four zoning, but I think you're going to address this as you walk us through the key elements of the bylaw, Jeff. So if you'd like to get started and share your screen, please go ahead.
Okay. Can everyone see that? Let's see, I'm not, I'm not on the top. Put this, get rid of everybody so I can't see anyone. Can't even see myself. So that's good. So here we go. This is the, this is draft number six. We've gone through a number of iterations here. This is what's before you right now. This version has a bunch of notes by me and it has some highlighted parts by me, just to remind me what to talk about. It's, it's never fun following Randall because Randall always gets to show the pretty pictures and, and, and living color. And I get this, I get this bylaw to slog through with you folks. So here we go. So what, what this bylaw will do is effectuate the kinds of developments that Randall showed with his illustrations. This is how you do it. You don't just get those results out of thin air. And you don't get those results with conventional zoning or conventional subdivision approaches. You need to have a, a bylaw that, that essentially demands that. If you have it as an option, you may get it, you may not. This is a, this bylaw is, is a requirement for subdivisions. Whereas the current cluster zoning bylaw that you have in your zoning is an option. There are a number of differences. And if anybody asks the question, how does this compare to your existing cluster zoning? I'm prepared to go down the list and, and, and tell you how they, how they compare. But anyway, let's just go through this. This is a very typical NRPPZ, Natural Resource Protection Zoning. Here we call it natural and historic resource protection zoning because you have so many historic properties in town that, that could, could fall under this, this zoning provision. Purposes and applicability. Primary purpose, permanently protect an interconnected network of conservation lands and historic resources of Stockbridge while providing options for the appropriate redevelopment reuse and conservation of historic estates and large properties. This is not the, this is not the cottage era estate bylaw, but those types of properties could very well come in as subdivisions. So you want to be ready for that. This section also intended to reduce environmental impacts, including habit, habitat fragmentation, foster more compact development patterns using flexible regulations for density and lot dimensions. And also promote creativity in neighborhood design, just like what Randall was showing. See, I get to read you the words, Randall gets to show you the pictures. Applicability. This applies for, for all residential subdivisions of, of land of twenty acres or greater when the, within the R two and R four zoning districts shall comply with this section. This does not apply to what is known as A and R, approval not required road front lot development that everyone is used to. And that's mostly what planning boards do. Those types of, of lot creation where you already are on a town road and you have frontage and you can create a lot. That doesn't have anything to do with this. This is a subdivision. These are for subdivisions. And in Massachusetts, the subdivision is where you don't have road frontage on an existing road, but you need to create a road, subdivision road to create new frontage. That's a subdivision. So this applies anytime you do that. There's also a provision for a non-subdivision application, which means by special permit, someone can propose a, a project like this, even if it's not technically a subdivision. Where they don't need to build a subdivision road. Access is by other means, perhaps directly from the road through shared driveways, other means. So this applies to both subdivisions and non-subdivisions. Waivers. Planning board may allow a development that deviates from the requirements here and by special permit. This is kind of an escape valve or relief valve that says, well, we can't really figure out every contingency that might be presented. Every piece of land, every developer's proposal. There may be some very good proposals that would be great for the town and that we really like it, but it doesn't quite match up with the language in here. So we have the ability to waive the requirements if it's going to result in a, in a better plan. And there are some standards for that. You can't just grant them willy nilly. So it's a relief valve and it, it's in all of these, all of these bylaws. This, this one here is very typical of the many that I've passed in Massachusetts. Consolidated special permits. Waivers are by special permits, common driveways by special permits. Any other use that requires a special permit. This just says, do it all as one combined special permit process. Save time and energy and, and and do it together and don't drag the project out. Conservation analysis and findings. This is a process that's largely contained in your subdivision regulations because this is a subdivision review. And it's a process where the applicant performs a conservation analysis. And it, you know, that's described how you do that. It looks at the conservation aspects of, of the property. And it also dovetails with the four step method that's also in here of, of looking at land and proposing which land should be conserved and which land should be developed. And then the planning board studies that conservation analysis submitted by the applicant and makes conservation findings. And this is as close as you get to discretion in here. But the planning board really, through its findings, either approves, modifies or rejects the conservation analysis of the applicant. This is the most important part of the whole process. Cause you're going to decide what's going to be preserved and where development can be located. Minimum preserved open space. In the R four district, the minimum is seventy percent. And in the R two district, which is a denser district, the minimum is fifty percent. And these percentages are, are in line with what other towns have done in Massachusetts. Allowable residential dwelling units. And this is all done by formula. Instead of some type of yield plan or conventional subdivision plan that may or may not be actually what you could do. This is all done by formula. And, and this describes the formula where you take the overall parcel and determine a net acreage. And you determine that by subtracting certain things. Ten percent of the developable area for roads and utilities. One half of the land with slopes over fifteen percent. All land subject to easements and restrictions prohibiting development, flood plains. All freshwater wetlands. So you take all that away, then you perform a unit count calculation and you have that remainder land and you divide it by what's called the density divisor. And that would be four in the R four district and two in the R two district. And four and two were selected because that approximates the kind of, of density that you now have under your conventional zoning. It also approximates the density neutrality that's in your existing cluster bylaw. So in terms of density, this really doesn't deviate from what you have now in Stockbridge. Types of residential development. As I said a minute ago, this just says whatever housing types are already allowed in the zoning district in which the NRPP, the NHRPZ is located may be proposed. Right now that's single family dwellings and duplexes by special permit. And if you wish, you can certainly expand on that. Dimensional and design requirements. Dimensional requirements and are either relaxed or eliminated. Minimum lot size, there is no minimum lot size. That's going to be determined by, if you don't have water and sewer, it's going to be determined by the Board of Health, which is going to require 10,000 square feet per bedroom for a house. So essentially one acre per four bedroom house. That's what's going to determine your lot size. Have less than four bedrooms, you can have a smaller lot. More than four bedrooms, the lot has to be larger, but there's that, there's no specified lot size. Setbacks, road frontage and road requirements. The setbacks are reduced. I believe the setbacks in here are, are twenty feet for a dwelling to the property line and ten feet for an accessory structure to the property line. Road frontage is eliminated. You have to have practical access through a shared driveway over the lot's existing frontage. But you have to have practical and legal access, but there's no lineal frontage requirement. And, and this adds greatly to the to the ability to build less roads, especially if these are going to become town roads, you will have less length. Let's see. And it is the way it says that there should be no numerical requirements for road frontage in an NHRPZ provided that each lot is legally and practically adequate vehicular access to a public way or a way approved under the subdivision regulations across either its own frontage or via a shared driveway approved under section six point one six of this zoning bylaw, which already exists. You already have a shared driveway provision. Arrangement of development, developable areas. This talks about about how lots should be laid out. It's, it's largely advisory, not directory to, to applicants. And it cites to the rural citing principles, which is another section that needs to be adopted. And within that is Randall's most excellent four step design process, which he illustrated just before. Permanent open space, open space in an NHRPZ shall be permanently preserved from development and should be configured as separate parcels from any building lot. And it, it talks about how that open space gets preserved. And there are a number of methods, but the first and foremost one to consider is a conservation restriction. That's, that's the state's ironclad way of protecting open space. There can be some problems with that. And if those problems are encountered, it does list some other ways to preserve the open space. But the open space from these is protected and preserved in perpetuity. Ownership of the open space land lists out a number of ownership options. My personal preference is the original owner keeps the open space, perhaps along with their original home and perhaps continues to engage in farming or forestry and continues to live on, on the property. But that doesn't always happen. So very often these go into a homeowners association comprised of the people who live there. And this bylaw goes into quite a bit of detail about a homeowners association because it's very important to set them up correctly. And if they're not set up correctly, problems can ensue. So this whole section here talks about requirements for a homeowners association. And if it's set up correctly in the beginning to where the individual landowners have responsibilities for the open space and for the road and, and for paying dues and fees. And if not paid, can become liens against the property, then it usually works very well. Homeowners associations don't work well when they have no documents to set them up. It's almost like good fences make good neighbors. Good homeowners association agreements make good neighbors too. And lastly, maintenance standards and, and management plan. I replaced just about all of this with some text that Randall gave me, which I thought was very complete and well done. Talking about how the, the open space needs to be managed and, and maintained. That varies and, and, and how much detail you go into here will depend on what kind of open space it is. If it's undisturbed forest, not much will be required. But if they're recreational areas, moat fields, trails, other kinds of facilities, then it gets much more involved. And then there, lastly, there are a couple of contingencies here. If, if there's a failure to maintain, what happens then? And if the town has to come in and maintain something in there that belongs to homeowners association, then how the town can recoup those costs? So that's that's the bylaw.
Jeff, thank you. There are some questions. And I'll, I'll, I'll give you one to start. Someone asked, they're saying it would be the same number of houses. In other words, density neutral. The design goals are laudable, but the fact is that we've used the two and four acre zoning for years as a tool to discourage large scale development. So I guess the question is why, why monkey with what's worked?
Well, it, it, it probably, if, if, it, it all depends, it all depends on, on the market. And if the market is such and landowners need to sell for some reason, they, they're, they're getting older. Their kids are not interested in the property. They need to, they need to move to a smaller place or, or move to Florida. They need to, they need to move to a smaller place or move to Florida. Properties come on the market and they will either be developed as conventional subdivisions with two or four acre lots. And as Randall said, house lots and streets, pretty much without any open space. Essentially, a low density, a low density sprawl type development. Because that's what, that's what they can do. Or if this is in place, they will be required to do it this way and produce either fifty percent or seventy percent open space, still getting the same number of units, but in in a smaller area, in a more appropriate area where the most important environmental resources used from the road, farmland, wetlands are protected and preserved. So I I just I I I just kind of reject that argument because if the economy says develop, it's going to be developed. The question is, how is it going to be developed?
Another question, Randall, did you want to say something?
Just wanted to say that what deters, you know, development is usually the density. And if the density is going to remain the same, the deterrent factor should remain the same. People are not going to be able to get more house lots on their property with this bylaw than they can currently. So there's there's no invitation to developers to come in and suddenly take an interest in Stockbridge because they still have to deal with quite a lot of acreage for, you know, every ten houses that they 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 want to build. So I think the deterrent factor doesn't change at all.
Okay, another question, Jeff. You say it's density neutral. However, I think it allows more units by special permit. Is that a correct reading?
Okay, that, that conceivably relates to this portion here that I just highlighted. Am I still screen sharing?
Yes.
Waivers, the planning board may allow a development that deviates from the requirements herein by special permit. Such deviations may be approved by waiver if the applicant demonstrates that the proposed alternative development configuration provides adequate protection of the site's environmental resources and fulfills the purpose of this section as well or better than an NRZ described herein. So that's what you have to do. This, this waiver provision, like I said, was put in because no bylaw can anticipate every set of circumstances that presents itself or every piece of land or every proposal that they may receive or every hardship or difficulty that might be encountered. So this is built in flexibility. And it is true that the planning board could say waive the waive the density divisor of four and lower it to three or density divisor of two and lower it to one for some reason. I can't see them doing that. Can't see how that would be justified. And
Jeff, could the waiver provision be directed specifically at the design element and not, and and to exclude the the lot counter density? I think you can give people relief by allowing them to do a different design as long as the natural features are protected adequately. But I don't, does Massachusetts law require that a waiver provision authorize the planning board to vary the density?
It could. Most of these things are 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 written density negative. And the waiver is sometimes envisioned as a way to get some of that density back under some circumstances. But here, here you have density neutrality. So I I I can't think of any reason why a planning board would want to approve any more density than you already have because it's density neutral. It's what you already have, and I think it would be a very difficult case to make on the part of the applicant.
Could the waiver provision have a sentence in there saying that the waiver flexibility does not apply to number of of lots being created, but simply pertains to the design and layout aspects?
It it very well, it very well could if if that's what the planning board wishes to do.
Okay, I'm just raising that because I think that was on the caller's mind.
Yeah.
I think you're right. Another question before we move on. And it relates to the same section waivers. By special permit, section D allows the planning board to permit any development and any use as long as it finds the quote development configuration provides adequate protection of the site's environmental resources and fulfills the purposes of this section as well as or better than an HRPC as described herein. Please justify this enormous expansion in power and permitting authority versus the current cluster bylaw, which requires the planning board to maintain the underlying density limits with no option to override them.
Well, it's 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 kind of the same question. And it's the first time, frankly, it's been asked of me. Because every NRZ I've written, and I've written many of them, has this provision, has a waiver in it, they all do. And it 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 does not pertain to uses that otherwise, that that otherwise wouldn't be allowed. There's there's no ability through this waiver. This waiver can only deviate from some requirement in here. It can't, it it can't allow uses that otherwise wouldn't be allowed. That that doesn't work.
Well, that should probably be clarified in the language. I understand that you understand it. But I think would help members of the general public to see what the waivers would allow the planning board to do and what the waiver provision would not allow the planning board to do, just to clarify it.
Yep. Yeah, if if there's nervousness about the waivers, we can, we can we can confine them, rein them in.
Well, that should probably be something the planning board talks about at its next meeting.
Yeah.
I'm looking at questions. One question, Jeff, I heard that the Massachusetts model bylaw guidance suggests ninety percent conserved and ten percent developed. Why not adopt these percentages?
The, the ninety percent, ten percent. I mean, I I helped write the Massachusetts model and I I believe I mentioned during the course of that, that Joel Russell and I had been working up in the Adirondacks where the zoning density is forty two acres per per unit. And we had designed an NRZ up there where the open space requirement would be ninety percent and developable ten percent. It it essentially gave you four plus acres to put your house on. And then the rest ninety percent was preserved. But we did that in the Adirondacks, and I think that kind of got into that Massachusetts language, but but that's not been done here. The highest that's been done here is eighty percent.
Another question. As I understand it, in this bylaw, density is not tied to the underlying R two and R four acre zoning. I'm still not clear on that. Could you compare two twenty acre lots?
Well, it is. It is because, well, this bylaw is similar to your existing cluster bylaw in that that bylaw also uses a formula. And it it has a net acreage calculation and it subtracts, you know, these constrained lands. And then, and then it says the remainder, say if you have a hundred acres and you take thirty away that are constrained, the seventy acres gets divided by the the lot size requirements in 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 the district. Well, our density divisors match the lot sizes in the district, four and two. Two in the R two, four in the R four. So that's how, that's how we've achieved approximate density neutrality by just using those numbers, four and two. This bylaw had previously been drafted with six and four instead of four and two, and that would have produced a different result. But to achieve density neutrality as the planning board wishes, we just used your 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 existing requirements as the density divisors.
And the zoning district boundaries don't change with this, correct?
I don't think so.
Right.
No, no, the the R four and the R two stay where they are.
Yeah, I just want everyone to be clear on that.
Right. Another question, Jeff. Under non subdivision applications. Number one, can you give an example of an A and R? And does thirty seven interlakeen qualify?
That's the CISTO?
Yes.
Okay, non subdivision. All right, so non subdivision just means you're not going to go through the subdivision approval process. It means you're not going to build a subdivision road. You may do it directly off the town road with with driveways. You may do it with a shared driveway off of a town road, but you're not building a new road in there. So usually the non subdivision applications that I have seen pertain to small projects that can be served by driveways, a couple of driveways directly off the road or by a shared driveway that serves, say, up to five or six houses. You start getting any bigger than that and you are into subdivision. If you have to get to the rear of a large property like the CISTO, say, it's it's probably going to be a subdivision. But so 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 that's the difference. That's the difference. I'm not sure if I answered the question answered the question correctly or not. I mean, I I looked at the previous CISTO proposal and I saw subdivision roads. So I I would view that as a subdivision project. Especially the roads that that get you from the front portion across the wetlands and out to the rear. I mean, those are all subdivision roads.
Jeff, I I don't remember that we talked very much about Elm Court during our conversations with you, work with you. Do you have a different, do you recall the details of Elm Court and do you have a different view?
I'm very sorry, but I wouldn't know Elm Court if I tripped over it.
Oh, actually, you would. It's you can't miss it, but I I understand.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Next question from the same questioner was, please justify why this allows the planning board to permit other uses on these properties like thirty seven interlakeen, bearing in mind that the uses table includes adaptive reuse if there is an historic structure on the property as there is thirty seven interlakeen.
Okay, that must refer to to this section right here. Because a non subdivision application for this type of a project, an NHRPZ, where they're going to submit to all of the open space requirements and 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 essentially preserve fifty to seventy percent of of the parcel voluntarily because they've chosen to 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 apply by special permit could include other allowed uses, but these are only allowed uses in the district. And and it's by special permit and probably they require a special permit anyway. Or if if they didn't, they would now. So this is nothing more than allowing incorporation of other uses that people could propose in the district right now. You're not adding any uses, you're just saying we've, you know, these are in the use table, it can be proposed. We want to add them to this project for some reason or another.
Okay, the final question from this questioner in this particular question, please justify why the planning board would be able to permit, quote, in excess of the base number of units.
Okay, this, this we added to our town NRZ, which was the first one in the state passed in two thousand and eight, Shrewsbury, where we saw non subdivision applications that would result in more, more development that could otherwise be possible without this methodology, you know, just through through A and R. Maybe, maybe three A and R lots would be possible just under normal courses of events. Whereas here, if they ran through all the calculations, they might be able to get five. So we added this language and and this gives the town some additional control of these things. Planning board may additionally consider the conservation benefits versus detriments of permitting a number of residential units or other allowed uses in excess of the base number otherwise possible without the benefits of this section. So if the application comes in and and it's for five units and the planning board sees that without this section, they could only get three through the normal process. The planning board, in its decision on the special permit here, may not allow that. It may trim it back from five to four or trim it right back to three, so you can have three, that's what you could get otherwise. So this this gives the town an additional say if if they find that this particular section might be a little too beneficial in terms of taking away from the conservation benefits of of the proposal. If if the conservation benefits are compromised by this this additional density or or more units or allowed uses, the planning board can say no.
Another question, Jeff. Could there be a requirement that the developer provide an economic analysis that lays out costs, infrastructure, sewer, fire, road, and benefits, taxes, jobs? Also, is there a way, thinking about climate change, that citing requirements, including solar ready, reduced fossil fuels use, could be incorporated? And finally, is there any requirement for affordable housing? You want to take those in order, I'll repeat them if you get, if you've lost track.
Okay, can you repeat the first one?
The first one is, could there be a requirement that the developer provide an economic analysis that lays out costs like infrastructure? like infrastructure, sewer, fire, protection, roads and benefits like taxes and jobs?
I don't know if there needs to be a requirement that they could certainly, they could certainly submit it. They could submit it into evidence. Especially if they were seeking a waiver, I think, I think where that would be appropriate would be right here. If an applicant is seeking a waiver and in order to justify that waiver, they could present that information. The waiver is by special permit, it's discretionary. Planning board can hear that evidence and could be influenced by it. So that's where that could come in. What was the second?
Second one, is there a way, thinking about climate change, that citing requirements to accommodate solar and to reduce fossil fuels, for example, be incorporated?
There are sections in, in state law now that that allow for that type of citing, especially to take advantage of solar. That was all put in in the eighties. So it certainly, it certainly allowed. You know, the solar and the affordable housing that you mentioned third. I mean, those are the kinds of things that that are often put in these bylaws as incentives, density bonus incentives. We took all that stuff out of here just to simplify it. You could certainly add it if this passes, you could certainly add it on next year. Probably add it on now if you had enough time. But, you know, these are density bonuses that are awarded by the town if a developer does certain things that the town wants that are beneficial to the town. Like affordable housing. Like solar access and things like that, that are just good for the community and good for society. But right now, we don't really have a place for that in here because we took it out.
Okay. Christine, do you want to comment on this next question?
I I think maybe you just missed it. It came in with a whole group of questions. And it was the impact that this bylaw would have on our population, on town services. And is it part of a strategy for luring young families into the town? That's, I think it's an important question, so that's why I wanted you to be aware of it. And it may take some thought before it can really be answered within the work that we are doing.
Yeah, I think I'm looking back at it and I did miss it and I'm sorry. The question was, what is the impact of this bylaw on the population? And the, you know, resulting effect on town services? And is, does this bylaw do anything to lure young families?
Yeah, I think my answer about economics sort of driving this, it was a question about whether this was going to be an attractant to developers. I think that has a lot to do with your town demographics and people's willingness to sell their land. The market in Stockbridge, I know the market where I live is pretty kooky right now. But if you have people that have land that are ready to make changes and the market is good, things are going to happen. What these bylaws influence is, well, what exactly is going to happen? Are you just going to have two and four acre conventional subdivisions with a network of roads and house lots? Pretty much like everywhere else? Or are you going to be able to preserve some of the rural landscape of Stockbridge as you're accommodating about the same number of houses and residents?
The bylaw should not change the number of houses that are built, the population that will come, the traffic that will come. It's all based on the existing zoning densities. What we're talking about here is improving the pattern. The pattern of where the buildings and the roadways and the woodland clearing and the development occurs. It really doesn't affect anything else. You should have the same amount of development with this bylaw as you would if you didn't adopt this bylaw. It's essentially density neutral.
Does this, another question for you both or either of you. However, does this bylaw encourage reasonably priced housing? What are the incentives to a developer to create that?
I think the only way you can get developers to build workforce housing or reasonably priced housing when they have the option to build expensive units under the law is to offer them some kind of incentive. And that may be, that's frequently done with a density incentive, increasing the density. It's sometimes done by reducing the street width and the cost of the development to the developer. But generally speaking, most developers try to build the houses that the market is asking for, the strongest demand is for. At the same time that they maximize their profits. That's what developers do. And to the extent that developers feel that their profits will be larger on a larger house, they'll build the larger house. The marketplace is not very favorable to moderately priced homes or workforce housing, which is why communities that are interested in providing that often try to encourage developers with the density bonus. Some communities, and I'm not sure whether there are any in Massachusetts, require that a certain percentage of the units be workforce housing. So that if you can build ten houses, one of them must be priced for the moderate income housing market. I know that some communities have required this as a as a mandatory feature of their codes. But I'm not sure whether that is doable in Massachusetts.
One idea that I've, I've run up the flagpole a time or two here is the idea of, well, I'm working with another town right now in parallel with you guys and their their bylaws that I'm writing are going to town meeting next month. And they have a concern that they want the houses in these types of developments to be smaller, to have less bedrooms, to be more suitable for people living in the town now in larger houses that can't maintain those houses or need to sell them but want to stay in town. And thinking that these types of projects with all the open space would be wonderful places to live. And they'd like to be able to build, to live in a small house there. So one option that they're, that they have in their bylaw now, they're going to take it to, they're going to take it to public hearing is to, instead of doing all the calculations and coming up with, say, forty houses after you do the math, say, forty dwelling units. Take those forty dwelling units and say, okay, for the purposes of this bylaw, that's four bedrooms per unit times forty, which is forty, eighty, one hundred and sixty. It's a hundred and sixty bedrooms. Now you take those bedrooms and divide them up any way you want into one, two, three, four, maybe five bedroom houses. Instead of forty four bedroom houses, you could perhaps have more houses that have less bedrooms. And the thinking here is that if a developer could build two, two bedroom, single family dwellings, it would probably be economically more beneficial, higher profits than building just one single family four bedroom dwelling. So you might actually have a built in incentive there just to divide up the bedrooms and then sell more houses. So the developer might be encouraged to do that and then people in the town will be getting the kinds of houses that they want. So anyway, God bless them. They're going to, they're going to try that next month and see if it flies. But you folks may also want to consider that. Maybe not right this, right now, but after you pass this, you might want to go back to work on it next year and weave that in for affordability.
Jeff, a couple of different people have asked a similar question about the changes in the minimum of open space requirements in the various drafts of this bylaw. You know, we've gone from ninety to eighty to back to ninety, gone back and forth in several of the drafts before we got to draft number six, this one, where it's seventy percent in the R four. The question is, why, why these changes? How will we end it up at seventy percent?
My tendency as a consultant for NRPCs, which I have written many of them, is to start you with the highest percentages of open space I think are possible in your town. And then maybe it comes down, they often do come down. I can't remember saying ninety, but maybe I did. I don't think ninety quite would work mathematically. I think your lots would end up being too small. But for the longest time, it was eighty and sixty, eighty for the R four, sixty for the R two. But recently, the planning board decided to go density neutral, so there had to be a change in the open space. A reduction in open space so that the individual lots would be at least an acre in size to support a four bedroom house was well septic in every case. So that's why we're at seventy and fifty right now. Because the, the density neutrality made that necessary to make that cut.
Can you define density neutral again briefly?
It's it's roughly, roughly, pretty closely equivalent to the cluster bylaw that you have now in place. And also pretty equivalent to what you get under just conventional four acre and two acre zoning.
Can I jump in and just say that those percentages of open space are minimum? And if a developer comes in and says, I want to build empty nester housing and I'm going to be building maybe three bedroom homes for these empty nesters and they don't want a lot of land to maintain. I might want to put those homes on much smaller lots and serve them with a community water system. Maybe a community septic system or several shared septic systems that might serve three houses in each leaching field. And by working with the Board of Health and locating the development and the septic systems on the best available soils, it's very conceivable that a developer could end up with seventy-five, eighty percent open space by downsizing the lots. But in order to downsize the lots, he'd have to provide off plot water and or off lot septic. And that may be what he wants to do in order to create a village or a hamlet feel a sense of community for the empty nesters that don't want to be on a one acre lot. They don't, certainly don't want to be in a two or four acre lot, but they might be just as happy on a fifteen thousand square foot lot. And you could do that with off lot utilities. That would be, you know, community systems provided by the developer.
Another question, I know we're beginning to run out of time, but I want to try to get to a couple more. Why is there no consideration of the character of a particular neighborhood and the interests of abutters? Why is the emphasis on developers?
Well, you, any of these properties could now be subdivided conventionally or under your current cluster bylaw. And in that process, all of the neighbors would be would be informed because there's a public hearing and that's no different, that's no different here. Parties in interest, abutters and abutters to abutters within three hundred feet would all be notified. So I don't see any emphasis on developers. I mean, you're going to, if the market conditions are right, if the demographics and the markets are right, you're going to get developers. And these bylaws are all about what they're going to be able to do and not be able to do in your town. And what's going to get left behind when they're done? And the public notice requirements are the same for conventional, for your current, your current cluster, which is also subdivision and for that.
You might be able to improve upon the public notification requirements by involving the abutters early in the process rather than notifying them after the plan has been hashed over by the planning board for months. And the applicant has maybe gone to two or three or four different designs. At that point, there's very little flexibility for anything in a butter or a neighbor has to be woven into the plan. I'm a great believer in bringing the neighbors and the abutters in from the very beginning of the process. So that they can say, they might say, well, we'd like more of a buffer here against the road or we'd like to make sure there's more buffer between our houses and the nearest house in the development. Or they might say, well, we know the property pretty well because we walk the woods informally with our dogs. And we know where there's, you know, some really nice features of the property that we'd hate to see developed. I was in a project like that in Ipswich, Massachusetts about fifteen years ago. And the developer had basically spun his wheels for more than a year by not involving the abutters and they just got very, more and more upset. The first thing I did when I was brought in to basically redo the plan is I invited the abutters out for a site walk. I said, what are the things about this property that you really like? They said, we want this trail preserved because it goes out to the cranberry bog and then it goes out to the state forest. And we don't want that trail interrupted. It was just a simple thing like that. And I said, well, if we can't preserve the trail where it is, what about rerouting the trail a little bit so you can still go to the cranberry bog and still go to the state forest from your house lot? Simple things like that, asking the people at the beginning of the process for their input rather than keeping them at arm's length for months and months and then asking them for their input. I think that can go a long way to making this, you know, a much better process for everyone involved.
Okay. Okay.
Could I share a screen for just a second?
Sure.
Okay, hold on, let me go back and do that. So th- there is a part right right here in conservation analysis and findings that 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 tries to address that. So prior to filing an application and with the preliminary conservation analysis plan in hand, an applicant is very strongly encouraged to meet with the planning board and Conservation Commission members, relevant town staff and abutters on the proposed subdivision on the, on the site to discuss the natural resources, open space, and historic buildings or attributes of the site. At this meeting, which will be treated as a workshop meeting of the planning board, the planning board shall informally indicate to the applicant which land is likely to have more natural resource, open space for its value and be most important to preserve and where development may be most appropriately located. So this is an attempt an attempt to get them in early to 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 try to accomplish something involving the abutters and 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 others before the formal process begins.
In that section, Jeff, there's a question, why would the select board be excluded from this section, from this process described in this section?
The the select board could be included if it had interest, but most select boards are not interested in this and and don't commonly go on these types of field trips.
I agree. I I think it'd be great to have this like board in involved, but very often, they've got a full plate of doing other things. And I don't know of any, you know, subdivision ordinance anywhere in Massachusetts where the select board is specifically involved in the process, but they're not excluded. It's just that they've got a very full plate doing what they have to do for their own jobs.
Okay. I think it's it's almost 10 after 8:00, and I think we we need to wrap this up. If we didn't get to all your questions, I'm just looking at one now. Who are these developers you've been referring to loosely? We don't know. These are people who own their property and may want to do something with it. They want us, they may sell their property to a quote-unquote developer who wants to do something with it. We, we all know about Patrick Sheehan and 37 Eaterlake, and but he's not the only developer, and we are not basing this bylaw on Patrick Sheehan and 37 Eaterlake. There are developers all over the Commonwealth and elsewhere who may be interested in doing business in Stockbridge. So I'm going to say we're, we're going to wrap this up. I want to thank everybody for participating. Thank you particularly Randall and Jeff for your thoughtful comments and your work leading up to this point in the process. Thank you, Christine, for all your work in preparation for this meeting. And Steve Burns at CTSB, to Mike Canales, who couldn't be with us. Tomorrow, there is a select board meeting, and I believe one of the topics on the agenda is a proposal from the planning board a, for funding of consultants to help us continue this work and other work on other bylaws that we're doing. We think that it's important to to have this funded, have this effort funded, and we'll see how the the select board deals with this at its meeting tomorrow. We're going to continue this process. This is not the final draft of this bylaw. There've been some very good comments and questions that we will need to address as a planning board and see if we can modify in various areas, you know, affordable housing is one. And maybe reemphasizing the importance of bringing abutters in at the earliest possible stage. And there are others which we will deal with in in due course. We just thought that it was important to get this in front of the public because it is close to a final draft. I mean, it's draft number six, so you know we've been working on this for a while. And we're hoping to wrap this up and, you know, soon, and we appreciate the input that we got from all of you, all of you who asked questions and made comments tonight. If you do have follow-up questions or your question wasn't answered, and I apologize if it wasn't, please send an email to Jay Carmichael, Jennifer Carmichael, she's the Planning Board Secretary, And you can find her on the website, too, the town's website. Also, she can be reached at the old email, jecarmichael@townofstockbridge.com. Thank you so much for participating tonight. We really appreciate all your involvement, and we look forward to continuing a dialogue as we move forward with this. Thank you all.
Thanks, Bill.